Excuse me, start the meeting. Brandon's going to be held up for a little bit. And we are going to be starting with our municipal judge appointment. I'm looking to see, Kristin, yes, you are here. And hi, welcome.
Lori, Councilmember Kinnear.
Go ahead, Paul.
Um, forgive me, this may be inappropriate. This is a legislative meeting. Do we need to call the roll?
You know, it is a legislative meeting, but I believe we can do that. I'm wondering if we should wait for Brandon and just interview Kristin first. But let's go ahead and call roll. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Council President Pro Tem.
Is Terry here?
I was just going to ask that. I don't see her on the call.
I don't see her.
Can you hear me? Terry is here.
Terry's here? Okay.
Yep.
But she's in the chambers.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and call roll as I see you. Um, Councilmember Stratton? I'm here. Great. Councilmember Burke? Here? Great. Councilmember Cathcart?
Here.
Looking, looking. I'm here. Anybody else that I'm missing? Candace is not here. Is Councilmember Wilkerson here? Okay. Thanks, Paul. And let's go ahead with our nominee for municipal court judge. I got a chance to talk with Kristin yesterday. It was absolutely delightful. And she's got a wealth and breadth of experience. I want to thank the mayor for putting her name forward. I think we will be well served. And I want to open it up right now for councilmembers to ask questions. So raise your hand if you have comments or questions. Go ahead, Councilmember Stratton.
Same thing here. Uh, Councilmember Mom and I met with her yesterday and had a great conversation. And so I'm supported and I was very, very impressed. So I'm good to go.
Great. Anybody else? Councilmember Burke, you look like you're going to say something.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Councilmember Cathcart? Questions?
You know, I don't have any. I was able to participate in the first round of interviews. And I really appreciated just how much experience that she had, both on the defense and prosecutorial side, so.
Councilmember Wilkerson has joined us, so let the record show that she is present. Councilmember Wilkerson, do you have any questions for our municipal judge appointee?
Uh, thank you. No, I do not. I had the opportunity to have a conversation with her earlier this morning. And all my questions and concerns were addressed, so I look forward to welcoming her to the court.
Okay. All right. I am not going to wait for, because we want to keep this moving. I'm not going to wait for a council president to vote on this. We have a quorum. So I'm going to call, go one by one.
Lori.
And prove this.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Go ahead.
Terry does need to read this resolution in. And I believe, I believe the mayor also had a few words to say. I'm not sure if she wanted to do that first or afterward.
Okay. Go ahead, Terry.
Okay. Resolution 2021-0007. A resolution approving the appointment of Kristin O'Sullivan as municipal court judge for the city of Spokane. Whereas Section 8 of the city charter provides that a vacancy of a municipal court judge shall be filled by the mayor for the remainder of the unexpired term and that the appointment shall be subject to confirmation by the city council. And whereas RCW 3.50.093 provides that the mayor fills a vacancy of the municipal court subject to confirmation by the legislative authority of the city. And whereas SMC 5A.05.030A states that a vacancy in the municipal court shall be filled by the mayor for the remainder of the unexpired term, subject to the confirmation of the city council. And whereas after full consideration, Mayor Nadine Woodward has appointed Kristin O'Sullivan as the municipal court judge for the city of Spokane. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council for the city of Spokane that it hereby approves the appointment of Kristin O'Sullivan to the position of municipal court judge for the city of Spokane.
Thank you. Uh, mayor, do you have any comments?
Well, I do. Councilmember Kinnear, I wanted to thank you, first off, for agreeing to support Ms. O'Sullivan's confirmation. And I wanted to thank Council President Bages and Councilmember Cathcart also for actively taking part in the selection process. As you know, Judge Tracy Staub was recently elected to the Court of Appeals, and that left an opening on the municipal court. Um, I wanted to thank Randy Cody for facilitating the process to get us where we are today. It was a robust process, and I wanted to thank everyone who was involved on that. In fact, on November 30th, right after the election was certified, um, the HR team with the city posted the vacancy widely. We received, just so you know, a little history behind how we got here. We received 17 applications. On December 30th, a subject matter expert met, a panel met, and that included members of the community, Council President Banks, our city attorney, Mike Ormsby, and they narrowed the candidates down to a list of four. Then on January 8th, a community and subject matter expert-based panel conducted interviews. They narrowed the pool then to three finalists with remaining stages of that process. And that included a community forum and interviews that I was able to conduct. And that's where we got to Ms. O'Sullivan. She quickly rose to the very top of that list and is exceptionally qualified to fill this role. So she comes from municipal court. She's been involved in docket cases there. She has more than two years as a commissioner and is a committee member for the District Municipal Court Judges Association. She also previously worked as the chief assistant city prosecutor, the deputy county prosecutor, and a private criminal defense attorney. So with your vote today, Kristin will fill the vacancy through December 31st of 2021 and then be eligible to run for election this year. So thank you.
And I just want to add, thank you, Kristin, for putting your name in. And as a candidate, because without that, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Uh, I noticed that council president is here, so let the record show that he is in attendance. Uh, council president, it's okay, we'll go ahead and vote on this appointment, and then you can take it from there. I got the thumbs up. Thank you. All right. Let's just have all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Great. Congratulations, Kristin. We look forward to working with you. Thank you so much. All right, council president.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Kinnear. Apologies for being late. Was trying to testify to get increased funding for public health at the legislature. And I didn't have enough status to get on soon enough, but got it done. So was that the first agenda item, or have we already talked about?
It was. So the second agenda item is for you, and we need Terry to read it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Pister.
I just wanted to say thank you all. I didn't get an opportunity. Thank you so much, all of you, for your interest in me. And I am so grateful for this opportunity. So I will excuse myself and thank you again.
All right. Madam clerk, if you would read the next matter.
Okay. Resolution number 2021-0008. A resolution ratifying the mayor's January 14, 2021 executive declaration of civil emergency or disaster. Whereas on January 14, 2021, Mayor Nadine Woodward issued an executive declaration of civil emergency or disaster in the city of Spokane hereafter the declaration pursuant to Spokane and Spokane 2.04.030 due to the public emergency faced by the city from the effects of a windstorm which occurred on January 13, 2021. And whereas the city is facing serious impacts of the storm as shown by the following facts. Number one, reports to city emergency responders, police and fire personnel began as early as 3:00 a.m., and after 6:00 a.m. there were no fire crews left to respond to emergency requests until the next shift change at 8:00 a.m., when workers who were going off shift were held over into the next shift in order to respond to the large number of calls. Number two, a number of trees fell on homes and streets which created serious public safety challenges for city residents. Number three, falling trees brought down a number of electrical power lines, and as a result, a Vista estimated that 70,000 accounts were without electricity, which represents approximately one-third of a Vista's customers in the Spokane area, with a heavy concentration of those affected customers being located on the South Hill. Number four, significant damage to parks department property, including parks, golf courses, and conservation land occurred, such as the loss of at least 125 trees and damage to as many as 100 more. The felling of the butterfly sculpture in Riverfront Park, damage to the roof of a clubhouse at one of the city golf courses, and damage to a number of fences on City Parks Department property. Number five, a large number of city streets are not fully usable as they are blocked by either fallen trees and other debris and/or downed power lines. And whereas a number of activities must occur to restore public health and safety to, excuse me, restore public health and safety and for the residents of the city, including but not limited to, number one, removal of the significant tree debris on city property and in the city streets and sidewalks, which will need to be chipped and/or transported to other locations. Number two, repair of city property. Number three, possible purchase of equipment and material necessary to accomplish the above. And number four, retention of services to accomplish the necessary tasks to restore public safety. Whereas in order to prevent further damage and danger to residents of the city, it is imperative to begin this work as quickly as possible. And whereas although the city council's regular January 18, 2021 meeting was canceled, as it is every year in observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, there is a need to act quickly. And whereas an emergency exists that necessitates utilization of the emergency powers granted pursuant to RCW 38.52 and/or 35A.33, and whereas the city of Spokane has the authority pursuant to RCW 35A.080 to make expenditures for emergencies requiring the immediate preservation of order or public health or for the restoration to a condition of usefulness of any public property which has been damaged or destroyed by accident or for public relief from calamity. And whereas the city of Spokane has the authority pursuant to RCW 38.52.100A to make appropriations for the ordinary expenses of the city, for the payment of expenses of its local organizations for emergency management. Now therefore be it resolved by the Spokane City Council, Section 1. As a result of the serious wind event on January 13, 2021, and the impact to the public health, safety, and welfare, there is a present disaster or civil emergency which necessitates the utilization of emergency powers granted pursuant to Chapter 2.04 SMC, SMC 7.06.180 and RCW 38.52.072, which are lawful, proper, and reasonable exercises of the city of Spokane's police power consistent with state law and the city charter. Section 2, the executive declaration of civil emergency or disaster by Mayor Nadine Woodward dated and effective January 14, 2021, is hereby ratified by the city council by this resolution. Section 3, notwithstanding the executive declaration of civil emergency or disaster, the city council reserves its full authority under the city charter to take any and all necessary steps to safeguard the public health, safety, and welfare of all residents of Spokane, including without limitation any necessary measures to mitigate the effects of economic disruption in connection with the disaster or civil emergency and prioritization of the use of funds or resources received from the state and/or federal governments. Section 4, the civil emergency shall continue until terminated by the mayor or by city council resolution. Section 5, a copy of this resolution and the executive declaration of civil emergency or disaster shall be delivered to the governor of the state of Washington and to the Spokane County Board of Commissioners. To the extent practical, a copy of this resolution and the declaration shall be made available to all news media within the city and to the general public in order to give the widest dissemination, excuse me, of this resolution and the declaration to the public as many other available means may be used as are practical, excuse me.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pister. Uh, mayor, since you're already here for the judicial confirmation, is there anything you would like to say in addition of, well, we quoted back a lot of the language from your declaration?
Uh, the only thing I would say is just a huge thank you to our city crews who responded to this emergency in such an expeditious way. Um, I continue to get pictures texted to me, especially with the progress that's being made in the city parks. Comstock, as council president, you know, was pretty decimated. We lost 50-plus trees, another 10 to 15 were taken down just because of the nature of the damage to them. So we're doing quick work. Um, we're harvesting some timber. We're going to give back to some of that to SNAP for low-income families. So we're, it was quick work on our part. And I think there were still a few trees that weren't able to come down because they were wrapped in power lines, and we were waiting for a Vista to clear those up. But a lot of hard work over the holiday weekend to get, to get the debris removed. And the residents of Spokane are taking advantage of the fact that we've opened the waste of energy plant for free downstairs through the end of this month. So that's about it. Thanks.
Thanks. Any questions by councilmembers or comments? Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks. I just also want to acknowledge the tragic death that we had of a doctor in our community killed by a falling tree. It happened two blocks from my house, and it was devastating for us in the neighborhood and certainly the community. And, um, once again, 99203 was hard hit by a windstorm. I was without power for five days, as were most of my neighbors. So, mayor, thank you for putting this forward. Let's hope that this is a rare event, but this was, you know, six years ago that we were dealing with this. So I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that this isn't something that we get to experience every five or six years. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Uh, any other questions, comments? I just have one, mayor. I think I've talked to some of your staff about it, but in terms of whether or not we ask the governor for an emergency declaration to help get some funding, you know, we're fortunate enough that wasn't as bad as 2015. But do, can you explain to us what the parameters are? Is there some kind of hard financial number, or is it kind of just political of what we think when we should ask or not? I'm just wondering about that.
Yeah, Paul might be able to address that. We are having some discussions with finance about that and whether or not that is something and avenue we want to pursue, so I'll let him clarify that.
Definitely still calculating those costs, so that's a key indicator. Uh, there's some estimates out there, but those costs are still being accumulated and collected. And then that conversation between the city of Spokane Emergency Management, which Sarah has been remarkable and instrumental in kind of coordinating this process throughout. She's working with her counterparts at County D E M, and there is kind of a chain of command as we go through from city to county, county to state. And all those conversations are happening, and those discussions are happening. We are aware and acknowledge the governor has reached out to us to offer support if needed, and so we're considering what that looks like.
Great. Councilmember Stratton?
Just a quick question. So when I have questions via email from constituents, I have one in particular where there's quite a bit of damage in their neighborhood. Who do I, I mean, I forwarded that to the mayor's office and Scott Simmons, but should I send it to somebody else to, you know, at least note that there's some trees down, and this is in a northwest part of town that's blocking an alley? So I don't know who to send that to.
I would think that if you sent it to Scott Simmons, that that should be fine.
Okay, well, I sent it last week, I think, so.
Oh.
I haven't heard any.
Fortunately, he was on vacation last week and just got back to town this week.
Well, I got another one from the same person, so I'll take a look and maybe send a second one.
If I may, mayor.
Carly, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Sarah Nuss sent out an email earlier this week, and that's who it should be going to, as our emergency management person.
Perfect.
She's coordinating that response. So that would be a person in the mayor's office.
Great, thank you.
Super. Uh, Councilmember Wilkerson?
I just want to acknowledge Sarah Nuss. Many in our community don't know who she is, but she is new to the administrative staff, but she was amazing. We had a senior, senior, senior facility in our neighborhood that had lost power, and they predominantly were on oxygen. And we reached out to Sarah, and she partnered with the Vista and got them up and running, I mean, in a very short amount of time. So I think she deserves some kudos from all of us. So shout out to Sarah and her good work during this event.
Yep. Well said. Thank you, councilmember. Any other discussion? All right, seeing that, let's have a roll call vote on the resolution affirming the emergency declaration. And I'll start with you, Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council president's an aye. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right, then that passes, six to zero. Um, and that, I believe, brings us to the end of our formal legislative session. And so I'm going to adjourn that so Ms. Pister can leave. And we'll transition into our study session that we normally have during this time. And first up is going to be a very interesting topic this week, according to the news media and everyone contacting us, special event. And Carly has been wrestling the invisible elephants on that for a while, and going to give us a little bit of an update and I think stand for some questions, because a lot of things, as we look closely at it and hear community concerns, we need to chat more about it. So Carly, I don't know if there's anything, you've presented to us many times, although, and even kind of recently, but why don't you tell us what the latest expedited update or however you want to tee it up?
I do have a brief presentation prepared, if you will indulge me. I wanted to give a little bit of history, because this is a really complicated issue that we have talked about several times before. And I know for some of our newer councilmembers, maybe not having that historical perspective to kind of see how we got to this place today. And then, you know, the last slide on here does kind of show for our big five events, the overtime over the last five years, and I thought that might be a good starting place to have that conversation and allow you to ask me questions, and we can move forward. So like I said, I'll make this brief, but just sort of historically, in 2013, many of you might remember Boris Borisov, who at the time was in Office of Neighborhood Services before he moved to planning, conducted several stakeholder meetings with special events, trying to learn more about the process in a way that we could engage better with our community, especially for neighborhoods and smaller events, doing block parties and that sort of thing. The feedback we received at that time was that there was a lack of consistency and transparency in how we were processing special event applications, especially regarding cost recovery for police overtime. The application process was also convoluted. You had to apply for a special event permit to police as well as one through parks. And if you were doing something through, like, some of our runs that went through Riverfront Park and, say, Mission Park, you needed an application from Riverfront Park and Park Ops. So they might end up filing up three applications. And so we streamlined that in 2014. That moved underneath my Spokane and created a special event coordinator position, which I served in originally. Cindy Fortmiller is in that role right now. We made changes to streamline the application process, created one master application, so events only had to fill it out one time. We formed a work group that meets every other week, which includes representatives from the Development Services Center, fire, police, parks, to talk about these different issues and coordinate. So we really improved the process on that end. We also conducted analysis at that time of cost recovery regarding, you know, in response to those concerns about police overtime expenditures. So we kind of came up with some analysis, worked through the content administration at the time, coming up with some ideas. Again, in late 2014, we met with stakeholders from different groups that we identified as large community events, races, and smaller parades, such as Hilliard and Ferry District have small parades, and then neighborhood events, to assess their concerns and kind of come up with some different cost options, which we presented either 100% cost recovery for all, which currently is what is in the ordinance as it stands today, unless it is waged by city council or the mayor's office, a 60% cost recovery at all, and that was based on the traditional amount that we have done for about the last two decades for Bloomsday, Hoop Fest, and Pick Out in the Park. We also came up with two other plans that incrementally increased it from, one of them started in 2015 through 2019, and that percentage increase was basically based on what they paid in 2014, really complicated math. And then a much more simple version of that, that was basically everybody pays 60% in 2015, 17 in 2017, and so on and so forth, to get us up to 100% in 2019. We presented to the PSED committee, so again, takes us back in time to when we had different committee names, in Inovaireburg 2014, and at that time, the administration recommended option two, which was a flat 60% recovery for everybody. So in recognition that we do want to have community events, that we do need to have, you know, these events pay for the overtime that is being generated in order to have the event. The feedback at that time was largely from our parades, that this was not possible, and that that was essentially not something that they would be able to afford to do, which makes sense, because they don't have an entry fee, there is no way for them to generate revenue to pay for it, and, you know, the people that are attending, it's a free community event. So at that time, council chose not to make any changes to the special events ordinance. So the next phases that we kind of moved into is we traditionally have that MOU with Bloomsday and Hoop Fest for the 60 cent cost recovery. For Pick Out in the Park, because it's contained within the park, we've traditionally just done a contract with them, and we haven't had to have an MOU, but they've traditionally been the same way. The three-year MOU with Bloomsday at that time was, again, the agreed upon 60% that we've always done, and we did a one-year extension for the Hoop Fest MOU at 60%. In 2017, we did a two-year MOU with Hoop Fest, which was approved by city council, but we capped the cost recovery amounts to $67,000 total in recognition of displacement from Riverfront Park during the remodel and having to move Center Court to a different location and the infrastructure costs related to that. It turns out that that was also the year that we ended up adding the heavy dump trucks to intersection to prevent people from driving through, which have to be staffed by personnel from Public Works, who are basically paid overtime to sit in that truck all day, because they need to be able to be in the truck to move it as necessary. That generated another $29,000 in overtime, which we didn't, we're not able to recruit because of that capped cost recovery. Uh, and as I just mentioned that, so we added that. 2018 Hoop Fest costs were also really high for police overtime. They were over $140,000 that year. So at the end of the day, we only ended up recovering 33% rather than the 60% because of that cap. In 2019, we did another new three-year MOU with Bloomsday, but this time it did have the 60% cost recovery, but the feedback that they had provided was, you know, and this is something that Hoop Fest has brought up to us as well, it's really hard for them to plan. It varies so much, and if it was, you know, $50,000 last year, and it's going to be $60,000 this year, that's a pretty wide range for them to be able to pay for. 4% reasonably covers sort of cost of living increases that may be occurring at the police department. So we capped it as it would be 60%, but no more than 4% year over year. In 2019 as well, we brought a new Hoop Fest MOU that we did bring at 30%, and that was in recognition of Hoop Fest's economic impact. Both Hoop Fest and Bloomsday have significant economic impact to our community. Hoop Fest is valued at 46 million, Bloomsday is just over 9 million, and Pick Out is just under 5. And those are the big three. LILAC, my understanding, is about an estimated 1.5 million in economic impact, so kind of just to show that significant difference, that Hoop Fest brings so much economic impact to our region, that is why we recommend 30%. Those of you who were on council time will remember that that was rejected because of the appearance of fairness and inconsistencies between why is Bloomsday and Pick Out still paying 60%, Hoop Fest is having to pay 30. Other community events and smaller ones are paying 100%. There's just no real rhyme or reason to it. So the direction at the time was to develop a more equitable approach. And the goal that I heard from council was, we don't necessarily want to have complete cost recovery because we don't recognize the importance of these events, but we need to meet certain objectives. And that was to be more transparent with what our billing is, to have equality, to recognize events with economic impact, but also to recognize community events such as parades that are free for our community to attend, as well as avoiding unattended consequences. So we need to not drive events that should be in parks onto the right of way, and vice versa. One thing that we have been seeing, and that's one thing I want to be clear when we have this conversation, is cost recovery is specifically focused on police and fire, public safety, overtime costs. It has nothing to do with the park costs, so like Pick Out in the Park pays significant fees to use Riverfront Park. The additional pays, or the fees that are going to be presented to you here are simply the overtime costs. So there are added costs in there. Some of the costs to be in the park have gone up since the remodel, which has forced some places to want to move their events to the right of way. And if we, if we make it completely free to do, then we are going to have people applying to do things in the streets that really should be in parks, because it's cheaper for them than paying for those fees in the park. So trying to balance all of these things, it is a really complicated issue. So that was, you know, kind of the structure that we came up with with this new chair. And again, the main takeaway that I heard from city council was, we want special events to pay at least a portion. Everyone should have a little bit of skin in the game, as they say. So the proposal in front of you is the 20- So the proposal in front of you is the 25% cost recovery for parades that would be phased in at 12 and a half percent that first year to allow them time to accommodate that, knowing that they have traditionally not paid anything. 50% for what we are calling legacy events with economic impact, which was Bloomsday, Hoop Fest and Pick Out in the Park, and then 75% for all other events. With the exclusion of free speech events, because we do have that in there, that is capped at a $500 minimum cost recovery. The math on this, based on our last year, was that it would only bring up our cost recovery from about 37% to 44% or about $27,000. So again, this isn't necessarily about the city recouping more money, it's just trying to balance that out a little bit and make it more fair and equitable between the different events. Again, just to put it into context of what we're talking about, only a handful of events are affected by public safety overtime needs. For the most part, we're able to not have to use public safety resources. So in 2019, we received a total of 212 special event applications, the majority of those in the parks, but we had many that were primarily small, little 5Ks that don't necessarily, might not need police services, or if they do, it's a small amount. So we only had 28 of those 212 that required public safety resources, and again, primarily police. 21 of those 28 were billed at least a portion, if not all of the costs. Those seven that were not were parades. And then the total cost to the general fund was just over $400,000, of which the city recovered 147. So that's, you know, kind of, I appreciate you allowing me that, that history of kind of how we got here. Here were some of the big events that I presented to you before on what that difference would be on the amount that they paid on the new tiered costs. You can see that again, Hoop Fest would be paying a little bit more than they have in the last couple of years because of that cap that we previously had. Bloomsday and Pick Out would pay less, as with some of our other fun runs. So Spokane Marathon, the Every Woman Can't Pink Run, those are events that traditionally were charged 100%. At 75, they would pay a little bit less. Spokane is another one, but the cost difference on that one, fire was there but didn't bill them for their time, so they got a little bit of a leeway on that one. And then you can see the parades, marches are the ones that we have not traditionally charged. So my last slide, which I think will be good for the conversation that I think we really want to have today, is here is a five-year look at the top five events, as well as their five-year average of not the cost recovery, but just the total cost of overtime. So we go from St. Pat's Day all the way up to Hoop Fest, and you can see that range. One final comment I'll make is you can see in Hoop Fest that they were, I think the valid feedback you've probably been hearing about the spiraling overtime cost for police, we worked with Chief Mydell in 2019 to really do an evaluation of how many officers really are needed to have a safe event. Hoop Fest's footprint has expanded over the years, especially with the remodel in the park, requiring them to be a greater distance from the downtown core, which did require more police. So those were some of those impacts, but we were able to bring that back down in 2019 to be a little bit more in line where it was previously. And you can see that from the other events, that for the most part, they're very consistently within a certain range. So that is my presentation for you now, and open it up to questions and kind of whatever you guys want to talk about.
Great. I think I found that very helpful, Carly. Thank you. Questions from council members? I'm only seeing a few of you, so just jump in if you have one.
Yeah, Council President.
Yeah.
I guess for me, my question would be, or maybe more a comment, I go back to looking at the economic impact, and I think there should be a direct nexus as to what they would pay based on that impact. And obviously, I think everybody should pay something, there should be some skin in the game. But, you know, maybe it's, you know, the city covers 80% for the highest economic impact, and then it kind of works based on some nexus, you know, works towards 100% of the user paying, depending on what that impact would be. So I think to me, that would make a lot more sense. We don't want a big event like Hoop Fest to leave the downtown core and say go out to the valley or some other place where, you know, that 50 million or whatever that number is in economic impact that they generate goes away. We certainly don't want that. So I think we should be really thoughtful in that regard. And then the other thought is, is I think on like the free speech cost recovery, obviously we don't want to impede anybody's ability to express themselves, but I think if it's, I think there could be some sidebars where if it's the same organization and it's creating high impacts and it's on a routine, consistent basis, and so it's a little bit more than just an expression of free speech, then perhaps there could be some alternative options there. So to me, that would, that would make sense as well to maybe consider. But I just think that, that economic impact piece would be, to me, should be the driver.
Council President, Lori.
Yes, go ahead, council member.
Do you want to talk at all about your exploration of the lodging tax to defray some of these costs?
Sure. Yeah, I've been in, you know, talks with Executive Director Matt Santangelo for a couple of years because Hoop Fest really, really boosts occupancy at hotels. And in the past, I haven't gotten too far with Visit Spokane and Tourism Promotion Committee, but I, I think Hoop Fest is a completely different event than all the other ones by far, just completely in terms of scale, in terms of, and also they have an entry fee, so they have the ability to raise money as well, which most of the parades don't. Bloomsday and Pick Out also have that. But I, you know, I've talked before with the lodging tax people and the tourism promotion, and I think some of that money should come from there. It's just, my conversations with Matt Santangelo is that, hey, we just need to be able to put a package together to make it pencil out. So it's not like we have to totally do it one thing or another. And they're still, of course, willing to continue paying. But there's, I think from what I've heard of lots of event organizers, there's several factors that they have in common. One, the total amount is, you know, too high for all of them, regardless of their scale. And another factor is they wish that there was a more of ability to control the costs, and it sounds like from Carly that we did have made some efforts in that, but they're kind of wondering, it seems kind of like a blank check to them on that side of it. So I think we need to keep working that. The third thing is they need to know what the maximum amount is going to be for planning. So we can't just apply a percentage as a look back. They need to say, you know, we need to have principles and say, hey, generally we're going for X percentage, but they actually need a contract that says in 2022, you're going to pay this much even if police assign five extra officers and the price gets higher. And then the other thing I talked about some event advisors is, we need to tell the event organizers, here's what one hour will cost you, here's what two hours, three, four. I mean, one of the thing with the Lilac Parade is it's a super long parade, so, you know, so there's another cost control factor as we can say, hey, at this, for this many hours, we'll give you this price, but if you're going to go more hours than that, then you're going to pay more of that. So those are just all different things, but I think mostly what the, this ordinance is trying to do is what most people want, which is some transparency. It just hasn't quite gotten there yet. So I answered more than your question, Council Member Kinnear, but I had a few things to say, so.
Council President, this is here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to add to the LTAC question because I was on that LTAC for a couple of years, and the problem with it is that you have these smaller organizations, the smaller nonprofits that need, you know, $5,000, $7,000 for marketing and to help boost their event. And then you have these big organizations coming in that need a big, huge chunk of money. And it really got, I think, the last year that I served on it, it was intimidating for the other organizations to even apply and to attend the meeting because there was that, there's no way they could compete. So, I mean, I think there's got to be a different way to do it for at least Bloomsday, Hoop Fest and Pick Out. I don't have the answer for that, but with the economic benefits we get, you know, I thought in the past, if there's any way for, you know, the business community to come together and, because they're getting, the downtown business community is getting a lot from these events, you know, to help them fund those fees. I don't have an answer, but I do know that putting it through LTAC was, to me, it didn't, it didn't work, and it made a process that was very uncomfortable for other participants trying to get those smaller amount funds for marketing.
I totally agree with you, and actually, when I, I should have distinguished, when I was saying LTAC, there's two different LTACs. One is, we call it the baby LTAC, which is about 120,000. And we always do give some money to some of the bigger events, but I agree with you, that money should mostly be for smaller ones. But there's a bigger lodging tax and then the tourism promotion charge, we supported at the city, an expansion of that at the legislature and then locally. So they've substantially increased in that amount of money for that, and that's kind of what I was thinking, is like, okay, well, we've increased the amount of money that they have to that, and particularly, not for every event, but for the ones that benefit hotels, that's exactly what that money is for. So I'm totally with you, I'm glad you raised that, that point. Other, Council Member Wilkerson.
I think I have to piggyback on Council Member Cat Cart with some of the perennial free speech groups that operate regularly, and I've been to a couple, where there's a significant police presence. And if there was a dollar amount attached to that, it should be equitable because what a drain on resources. And chair in the LTAC, I was going to say, there's not enough money to even cover Hoop Fest expenses, but those smaller groups really need the support. I think they're the glue in the community that we do not want to overlook or exclude because they bring an additional richness to the community also, so. But it has to be something, as a business, all those groups, I agree, need some type of financial commitment in order to plan ahead, and I do not want to see them leave the city of Spokane.
Yeah, let's reenact, yeah, I totally, I mean, we're, especially, you know, Hoop Fest is just like, all right, we'll get that figured out, I have no doubt about that. I did want to just address the First Amendment piece. So the reason that's so low is that is conformance with federal law. So there's a lot of federal law that says you can't charge people almost anything for a demonstration kind of parade because it's an obstruction to people to do it. So that's, that $500, that's related to a lawsuit actually that the city was in several years ago. So that, that's, that's not a, you know, from a practical layperson standpoint, that makes a lot of sense. But legally, I think we are, we're constrained by that as a city, so. But again, you know, then I worry is like, everyone's going to say, oh, the Lilac Parade is just a demonstration. So there, there's some challenge around that, yeah.
Lilac lives matter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lilac queens matter. I mean, I'm going through it too in my head, yeah.
But anyway, that's a constraint, is just that federal law that we don't have any say over. But other questions? I had another one, I raised this with Carly and Mary Murmott, who's also on the line. I just thought a little bit, when I looked at the language, it didn't quite, it wasn't quite exactly parallel in what terms. Sometimes we use parades, sometimes we use community events, and I just, Mary, I don't know if you, you know, I just kind of picked that up this week when someone was asking me about it and looked at it. I don't know if you've looked at it with that kind of a fine-tooth comb recently.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I think we're open to suggestions about how we can, you know, make the language more clear. I think in certain scenarios, we've just sort of morphed the language that we've had in the code over time, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there's, you know, a real rhyme or reason to it. If any of you have suggestions about how we can conform that, but I'd be happy to take another stab at it if you'd like to see that in the next couple of hours or day, you know, I'd be happy to take a look at conforming some of that language. That's a good comment, actually.
Have we looked at what other cities do our size? How other cities handle it?
We have done quite a bit of research, you know, against special events during, I want to say about 2017 through 2018, special events actually moved underneath Chris Becker's group in Development Services Center, and she actually contracted with Moltz, and we had an analyst who did a ton of research on basically really streamlining our process and helping continue to make this a better objective, and did do a lot of research on what other cities do. One of the other proposed changes, which I didn't talk about a lot, is the change to the application fee, which is graduated based on size of event. That's very standard for what other cities do our size. So another thing that has been suggested in the past is a different tier structure for nonprofit versus for-profit groups, you know, having that be looked at. In our experience here in Spokane, almost every single event we have is a nonprofit, even Hoop Fest is a nonprofit. So to me, it didn't really make sense for our region to be doing that because they'd all be underneath the nonprofit rate. So the cost recovery structure has varied. You know, one thing I think we would like to get to, it's just a challenge of getting there, is a fee structure, I think, to Council President's comments on that more transparent, what is this going to cost? We do give them some heads up on an estimate of, you know, there's a contract that they have to sign with PD, and so we do let them know. One of the things that we're looking at doing right now is moving our applications online and using sort of like a TurboTax-style application, and then it would give you an estimate. So to your point, like you typed in a parade and were trying to come up with some set routes, and say like, I want to do a parade on this route, and it's going to be this many hours, that we could come back and say, that's going to require 180 hours worth of police time, and your estimated cost is going to be this much. And so they would know that before they even apply. We meet with them beforehand, we encourage on our application, any new events to meet with us and sort of do some planning before we get going. So we're always trying to, I think, improve options and looking at what other cities done to have bring that back. It's really kind of all over the board. Some of them do the same thing we do, which is, you know, it's 100% of police cost. Some of them is a flat fee structure that is just based on this type of event, what the people is, you know, $20,000 or whatever that structure might be. So nothing horribly consistent. We were trying to find what model's best for Spokane. I will say in general, from our research, every city has some cost recovery. This isn't like they're giving away for free.
If I could just add to that, you know, one of the things you'll notice, sort of an obvious change, is that we've never really included the term police officers in the special event permit ordinance. And it may have seemed obvious, I think Sergeant Gately had told us, well, you know, the cost of traffic control, that sort of implies police officers, and that's true, but that kind of doesn't address all of the events that take place in the park, where you're not really doing any traffic control, you're doing crowd control, you're doing security and that type of thing. And I know the police department comes to you, you know, probably more than they'd like to, seeking some sort of, you know, reimbursement from the costs that are recovered for the time that they have spent, you know, and paying overtime officers. So this actually just recognizes that there are police officers used in not only traffic control, but crowd control, wherever that may take, whether it's on the public right of way, whether it's in the public park, or, you know, whatever that venue may be, it's a cost, it's a very expensive cost. So, you know, that simple change is just sort of putting it out there to any event sponsors, but that is part of the calculus, and it's something we need to consider.
Council Member Cat Cart.
Yeah, just wondering, do we know how this would impact an event like the Hilliard Days Parade?
The Hilliard Days, if I recall, is very nominal, it's like $1,000. So they would be at 25%, so it would be about $250 for them. They don't really make the list because they're so low, it's so brief.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I really like the idea of coming up with a few different parade scenarios, like, because, you know, there are only a few routes that we normally do in the downtown and And there's the smaller one, there's the larger one, there's the, you know, put it in, it's an hour, it's two, it's four. And kind of coming up with some prices and then letting the event select what they can afford. Even with this big discount, I mean, I'm still keeping the big discount. But it gives some events some ability to do it. And then also, if we capped it at those amounts and then maybe, you know, updated it for inflation each year, then that gets the police some incentive to control their costs too, you know, and say, you know, we can do it with seven instead of nine, and we're going to eat it if we do the nine. So I mean, I feel like we're getting really close. And I just want to commend your work, Carly, on it. It's really a thankless thing, but you've already made huge progress in the application and the whole processing. I think, I think we're getting really close, but I don't know if we're going to be there on Monday, just heads up. So we'll, we'll talk about it at briefing. But, and we've kind of, I guess, a silver lining of the pandemic is, you know, they're not doing the St. Patrick's Day Parade this thing, so it's not quite as urgent for us. We have a little more time, although I'm excited for it to come back. So, other questions, comments? All right, well, why don't, so Mary basically said if people have anything language-wise, get them to her. We can talk about it, just that briefing a little bit and see if we want to put it off for a few weeks to get a little more of the community. I mean, the great thing is, once it gets on our agenda, everybody has an opinion. So, you know, I've had several conversations, really helpful ones, you know, just getting feedback from event organizers, but I'm sure you all have as well. So let's kind of gather that and just continue to make it better. So, it's good. Okay, that is that. And then have on the agenda, it doesn't have to be a long discussion or not, but I did a rewrite on the Hundred Day Goals document and sent that out, tried to capture the conversation as best I could. The way this might work is, or essentially, we have a resolution adopting it. I think the vote would be on February first. But if people have anything more they want to say, you can also email. Email, council member Kinnear.
Council member Mum asked me to move something up on that list, and that would be COVID and dealing with COVID. So that should be one of our high priorities for the first one hundred days, to inform people or partner with other organizations such as the Health District to let people know where vaccines are, any changes that are coming down that the public may not be aware of. So we're more of a, not actually driving the conversation, but able to coordinate with others and get information out. And certainly, in conjunction with the mayor's office as well.
Yeah, that's a great point. I did put that in. It says, implement and publicize transparent COVID-19 vaccine distribution plan. So I think that's what she was.
Do you want this in order, or just their first one hundred days? There's no particular order, right?
No, there's no order. It's just organized by committee. And if not, I didn't try to, I didn't try to order them in terms of value or importance. Oh, I'm also getting a text that council member Mum was fine with this version. So I think, so she has gotten it through you and through me, what she wanted, I think. Other, any other comments, questions? Council member Bert.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. This is a great idea, and I think it's been really helpful to come to a neighborhood council meeting or an event or anything like that, and people ask what's going on. We can talk about this. And it's just been really helpful to kind of organize my thoughts around what, the direction we're pointing. So I look forward to continuing this type of style of leadership with you and hopefully, we can get some of this stuff done, so.
Yeah, good. Well, I appreciate everyone participating and getting it. Because I, you know, I hear this all the time from all of you individually and other people and staff. It's like, I feel so isolated. I don't know what's going on. What are people working on? What are, what's the plan? And I'm kind of like, yeah, I feel just as isolated. I don't know. So that was the attempt, is to try to, again, just point it out in a direction and then hopefully, hold us accountable for moving forward. You know, things might come up, we might not get some things done, we'll certainly get other things done. But at least we kind of know, so. Okay, anything else? Is it good of the order? All right, thanks, everyone. Thank you again, especially council member Kinnear for taking over for me when I was late. And everyone have a great week.
Brienne. Brienne, we are going into executive session.
Sorry, forgot about that. Oh, yes. So we are going into executive session to discuss labor negotiations. And we will set an ending time for twelve-thirty. We don't expect to take any council action afterwards, but I'll come back on at twelve-thirty and either adjourn the meeting or announce an extension. So there's a link for people to connect. All right, thanks, anyone who's still listening. It's twelve-thirty, and we have adjourned our executive session, and we are now adjourning our meeting. Have a good day.